I think more so than usual today.
Is there a resident with a child here that doesn't have a seat?
No, we're trying to get family here. We prefer to have family.
If there's a resident with a child, I'll do it by seat.
How about a family member?
A family member, but one of those children.
Okay, we'll do that.
Can you stand? Can you stand?
I don't care.
There's a, pretty much the, like an overflow room.
I don't care about that.
It's still gonna be, you can still view it.
Thank you, sir.
And if you're with me, I'm gonna tell you straight away now, if you're with me. Right here.
This meeting is for the family, I have to admit that, so.
You don't.
Can I have one more volunteer? We have a husband. Okay, thank you very much. Danny, you have another one? Rosa's willing to move.
Sorry.
Another family member? Another family member? Uh, I'll, I'll, I'll have another family member.
Yeah, you can still speak.
Yeah, I'll keep it up.
You can still speak.
I know.
Even if you're not sitting here.
Yeah.
So I got two spots.
Yeah.
City of Uvalde, Texas, regular city council meeting, six P M., Tuesday, August the ninth, twenty twenty-two, at City Hall, Council Chambers. So I apologize that we're back here, not at Civic Center, but we had the Civic Center booked with Avanti, and we couldn't get set up in time then, so I apologize for the tighter quarters and that, but this is the best we could do on this much notice, so. With that, Emma, I know you're here as minister, we want somebody, we were looking for a minister to give us some prayer, if you would like to open for us.
I don't think this is on yet. All right, let's just come before the Father. Father God, we come before you this evening, and we submit this time to you. And Father, we ask for your wisdom to rule and reign in our hearts. And your word says, to let peace be the empire of your hearts. And so, Father, I ask that your peace would settle in on us here today. I ask that your wisdom would rule and reign among us. I pray for our city council members. I ask, God, that you would give them great wisdom, that you would cause them to see beyond the here and the now. I ask, Father, that unity would reign among us. And I come against all the words that have been spoken about Uvalde. It will not be in a terrible place and have a terrible name, and be avoided. I thank you, Father, that as a community, we will band together. And Uvalde will indeed recover, and it will be better than before. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, citizens' input. Major Lee, awesome?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Is it my turn?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Is that better?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What I wanted to speak to you guys about today, and speak to everybody about today is responsibility. And that responsibility is, what has happened with these officers that we've seen in videos in the hallway? Because as far as I'm concerned, uh, it should have been a no-brainer. These, all these folks should have been fired. A couple of them should definitely be criminally charged for negligence, and we're seeing none of that. Instead, what we're seeing is officer safety. And I gotta tell you, folks, the American people are tired of it. Okay, we're tired of hearing the excuse of officer safety, okay? We don't see any firemen standing outside of a burning building talking about, I'm not going in there for fireman's safety. Okay? So we need to do something, and we need to do it right. The American people are watching. This, this right here, uh, this negligence to do something about what could have been avoided. I mean, I just saw on Facebook a couple months, these guys had brand-new equipment, brand-new gear. It is your job, okay, as officers, to put yourself in between the bullet and the citizen. That is the job, okay? That's what you signed up for. You didn't sign up for free donuts at Burger King. You didn't sign up for special rent when you looked somewhere because you parked your officer car there. You know what I mean? You didn't sign up so that you and your blue line buddy could break the law and you guys could look the other way, okay? You signed up, they signed up to, uh, to protect the citizens, okay? And enforce the law, sure, that's a, that's a good thing, but protect the citizens is A number one, okay? That's what they need to do. When they go through that, okay? We don't wanna hear excuses. We don't wanna hear officer's safety. We don't wanna hear any of this crap, all right? We wanna see results. We wanna see responsibility taken for the actions that happen on this day, okay? There's no more time to wait. Has any one of these guys been fired? Any of them? One officer. There were three hundred and seventy-some odd officers there, was one of them fired at all yet?
We have one, we have one for the city of Uvalde on suspension.
On suspension?
Yes, sir.
Is that suspension with pay?
That I couldn't tell you, I don't, I don't.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Okay, suspension with pay, great, great. So I can just be negligent in my job and take a vacation, huh? Is that what we're telling the American public, is that what's happened here in Uvalde?
Oh, sir, we've started an internal investigation, and we've, we've got an outside agency doing an internal investigation of every one of our officers.
Right, how long is this gonna take? Because from my investigation, it took me about five minutes of watching that video.
Well, I mean, we, we could take up to sixty to ninety days or more, we don't know. He's already started the investigation.
Sixty to ninety days. Sixty to ninety days, we're gonna get some responsibility.
There's still other investigations going on.
Are we gonna, are we gonna get responsibility in sixty, ninety days? Are we gonna get, are we gonna obey the policies and procedures and nothing's gonna be done? What are we gonna get?
We're gonna, when, when, when this investigation is done, whatever actions he tells us to do, there's nobody involved in this investigation with the city. It's completely outside people that have free range to do what they wanna do.
Right, but the investigation, but the investigator's not in charge of firing.
He's not gonna charge, but he'll give us, he'll, he'll tell us what, what procedures we need to follow, what, who needs to go, what needs to happen, and that's what'll happen when, when we get that investigation done.
Hopefully, the investigator's not a family member of any of those.
He's not. He's completely outside.
Thank you.
I'm not gonna read the address for the next person, but good citizen.
Hello, how's it going, everybody? Um, everything's been well today. Uh, I'm, I'm here because of what happened. Uh, I'm, I, I've lived in Texas my entire life. Um, I've never seen anything like what happened here, anywhere in the country. I really don't, I don't think I've seen any, any of it anywhere. Um, it's absolutely disgusting to me that we have officers that are still in the force. I almost got in a fight with one of your officers, a lieutenant, just not even thirty, forty minutes ago. Oh my God, physical altercation with a lieutenant because he was violating public law. He was violating the law, operating a motor vehicle with a seatbelt on. How do we expect these cops in this town to respect us if they don't even respect the laws as they're supposed to uphold? I didn't know, honestly, know what I was gonna come up here and say. I, you know, I've had a lot on my mind about this, but this is absolutely ridiculous. It's not that hard. You look at the video, you watch the evidence, and you make a decision, okay? I understand there's investigations going on. How long are the investigations gonna take? These investigations can go on for years, okay? And, and then what, what do you think's gonna happen? Do we have to show up here every time the city council meeting and wait for something to happen? Or are we just gonna have city council members that actually have the stones to stand up and say, you know what? Our police department, they, they effed up. They did the wrong things. They didn't do what they're supposed to do, and they thought about themselves before innocent children. I have kids at home. I have four kids. I live my kids to death. And if any one of those officers were to put hands on me to go into that school, they would have had to kill me. I, I don't care. Any officer is gonna have to either kill me or get dead. That, that's not gonna, that's not gonna fly with me, okay? But I see any of your officers making mistakes, I will publicize it, and it will absolutely be for everybody to see. And I'll make sure it gets out across the world, okay? I've got people watching right now from Switzerland, Norway, Denmark, the U K. Everybody's watching this, guys. We just need to actually stand up and do something about it, okay? I get you have to wait for a protocol and, and gotta do all this stuff. It's not that hard. There are people who wanna work, and there are a lot of good law enforcement officers out there. There are a lot of bad law enforcement officers out there, too. And I would say, a majority of your law enforcement in this city, I don't know about the county, but about the city, needs to be changed out. Okay, I'm not, I'm not from here. I have property near here, and I have property in the county, you know? And, and this is really sad. Like, I love coming down here, and it's sad that parents can't even go in and get their kids. It, it's sad that we have to sit here, you know, be talked down to, like that gentleman was a little bit. You know, it's, it's really not that hard, guys, come on, do better.
Do better.
Do better.
Do better.
Dan, Erie County?
I've come all the way from, uh, western New York to come down here and address this council today. And, uh, part of my job and what I do for a living is to maybe help bridge that gap between law enforcement and the citizens, because there's a huge gap there. And in my entire history, in my entire career working in this city half, I've never, in my entire life, seen somebody with negligence that puts more police officers in danger across this entire country and world than your guys' police department down here. So what I want is accountability for these officers who put all the other officers in danger. Because if you guys wanna talk about officer's safety, we oughta start to talk about heroism, because officer's safety is nothing more than cowardism, all right? Um, I don't know if you guys wanna hear a Yankee come down here and roost your board because you guys ain't getting stuff done.
Yeah, yeah.
Here we are from western New York to down here to demand some change down here and ask for some accountability on behalf of the Erie County family. Because you guys are putting my officers in danger in my county, in my state. You guys are held no accountability. You guys wanna put them on vacation? That's what you guys wanna do? You guys gonna put these guys on vacation, give them pay? Today, officers in this whole country in danger because you guys don't have the galls, the stones for accountability. That's what we want down here today. We want accountability, we want answers. We don't want, oh, we're gonna investigate ourselves, find out wrongdoing. This city down here, don't go in there and they wanna use children as human shields? What is wrong with you guys? How do you guys call yourselves men down here? All yous down there, out there, I, I got a, you've all be police department member over here with a blue line flag, defecration of the American flag on his face. Why is his strike not yellow for yellow line gang members down here in Uvalde? That's what we wanna know.
Yes.
And how is that appropriate to defecrate a flag on his face right now? Blue line gang stuff? This is the yellow line, this is home of the yellow line gang members, guys. And you guys gotta change that. It's up to you guys to change it. None, the police ain't gonna change it if you guys don't hold nobody accountable for this.
Right.
This whole country is put in danger by this council right here because they're not, nothing's being done. What, we're, if I, I do, also, I'm a mechanic in my trade. If I leave a tire loose on a car, nobody's gonna give me paid vacation when that guy loses his life because the tire came off. Your police department's tire came off the other day, and we want, we want, we want answers and we want accountability. On behalf of the Erie County fam, I drove and flew many miles to come down here and talk to you guys today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
So let's, you guys are a Yankee, come down here, you guys aren't even men. You guys better get your board on gear, and you guys better get your, your act together down here. We don't wanna have to come down here and address officer's safety. Again.
That's right.
Nowhere in this country does anybody, any police department in this history of this country ever put police in more danger than you guys are.
That's right.
And then, and then, what, past that, the citizens, children? There's children in this room who've seen things that what they should have never seen. Then, then the officers should have been in there getting shot at, not waiting outside arresting parents?
Yes.
You guys are a disgrace.
Yes.
And you guys better hold some accountability, these, the, the management, the, whoever's won in the show, you guys better do something about it.
Yes.
You better.
I come down here with my cockroaches crushes today to make sure you guys hear the, the message loud and clear. Nobody in this country wants to hate police officers, all right? We all wanna love them, we all wanna appreciate them, we all wanna call them, and we wanna, we gotta follow them. What are you guys doing to that image? You guys think about that?
That's right.
Let us think about that when you, when it comes down to some accountability for these officers, because that's what the, that's what the people are here, the holding signs that say accountability, all right? That's what we want.
Yes.
And I yield back. This Yankee will sit down and listen to the rap.
Adam Martinez?
Hello. Some of my questions were already answered, but I just had a couple of, uh, questions. Hello, Devin? Yes, I have, I have a couple of questions, and some of them were answered already, but one of the things that I wanted to ask is how we're gonna change the perception that we see our police officers? Because I was happy to tell my son that they were gonna have a lot of state troopers there, and they had fences, you know? Maybe he'd feel a little bit better, but he told me, um, who cares if there's cops? They're not gonna do anything anyway. And I, I just didn't know how to answer that. And I feel like it's the police department or the cops to help change that perception. How, how are we gonna do that? Because I want him to go back to school, but I'm not gonna send him back until he feels comfortable, until she feels comfortable. So I can't do that. I can tell them that they're gonna do a good job, but how are we gonna do that? How are we gonna change? Are we gonna raise standards? Some of the police officers, they ran twenty yards, and then they were breathing hard, and, you know, they were, the way they acted. What can we do to raise the standards to make them feel more comfortable? Because it's not about us, it's about the children. And I haven't heard anything about what we're gonna do to help them feel better.
Well, one, one of the things, Adam, I can tell you, we're bringing in Tia, Teeks, and they're top-of-the-line instructors to meet with our bill and start retraining and additional training for our officers. You know, we realize we have to earn this community's trust again, and we're gonna do everything that we can to it. Contrary to what the, the, all these other people will, there will be accountability, but we do have a process that we have to follow. But I, I can promise you, we, there will be accountability, and we are gonna try to earn, and not try, we will learn this community's trust again.
Is it possible for you to do some type of, like, physical or weight type, where they have to meet a physical test? A lot of them seem like, like, I'm overweight, right? But some of them seem like they're a little bit overweight, and image is everything, in my opinion, right? I mean, if you look, like, sometimes you see the border patrols, they look more professional, they get more respect. And when you're not in the tip-top shape, it, it doesn't represent, nothing against anybody, right? But it doesn't represent a good, uh, police officer, in my opinion. So I don't know if they can somehow raise the standards on, on, you know, the weight limits or the physical tests that they have to. I know in, in the academy, they do some tests, but I don't know if they keep up with that or not. And I feel like that would maybe make them feel a little bit safer as well. That's just my opinion.
How about we look at, how about we look at, maybe try to set up a little commission? Some family members, some community members, some council members, and we can discuss that. I mean, would you be willing to participate in that?
I'd be happy to.
Absolutely, let's look at that.
Why don't you have that already?
A public apology.
Yes.
None of them have apologized yet.
So I did, I did have another thing. Um, the current fountain that, that we have over there, I was, uh, I've been talking with some of the family members, some of the teachers and other community members, and we will pitch in to, if y'all would consider doing, like, a koi fish pond there where we have the current fountain, we, as a community, will pitch in and pay for all the koi and all the equipment. Um, because I think that it brings peace. Some of the parents, especially some of the ones that had injured children, when they go over there, they get anxiety or they get these flashbacks. And maybe doing something like feeding the fish might help them feel at ease. So I wanted to throw that idea out there, and if y'all consider it, maybe I can look a little more into it. Uh, like I said, we'll take care of the cost and maybe talk to the botanical gardens to donate some fish. But I wanted to throw that out there and see if y'all would actually consider it.
We are in the process, it's already started, I talked to them yesterday. We're completely rebuilding that fountain. What you see today, maybe tomorrow, is not gonna be the same, hopefully within a week or so. It's gonna have, it's gonna look much, much better, and we'll consider maybe some fish. We gotta get the, the fountain in shape again.
All the ponds, all the filters, the entire fountain's getting rebuilt right now.
Yes.
So would it be possible to maybe put some? It's coming from not only me, but family members. I try to work directly with some of them, and I think that would be nice, but I'm, I'm glad to hear that it's being.
It's being redone.
Please take consideration some of the, I don't know who, it was a great decision to clean it up. It looks better, they're emptying it out. But if you consider that, a lot of the kids love feeding the fish, it's very peaceful, and people would come and look at it. I think it'd give the, the pos a little bit better look. Uh, so if you consider that, I'd really appreciate that.
Thank you.
That memorial needs to be made out of marble, and every one of those children's names need to be etched in it for everyone to know.
Yes.
Jack Miller?
Oh, Jack Miller, San Antonio, Texas. This is my card. You're gonna want it, and you wanna give it to all your police officers, because I'm gonna make y'all my hobby. I'm gonna sit right after this, I, I catch bad cops. I appreciate you guys, citizens are telling me you give them extra time here, and I'm glad that you're letting them vent, very important. And I'm glad you're talking about fish ponds, and you're talking about getting people involved. That's great, and I commend you for that, but you are not doing enough.
Yes.
Every cop that was there that did not go in, no amount of training is gonna cause them to go in. They were already trained, I was a cop, right after Columbine, and they came out with active shooter training. And as soon as I heard that day, before video came out, I started telling everybody, they weren't following their training. And I'm here to tell you, if a mass shooting happens again in your city, these same police are not going to run in. You don't have to take my word for it, look at what they did. They were trained to run in and stop the shooter. And they didn't. I'm not anti-cop, I'm just telling you, that's the facts, right? They didn't do it, and they should have. We all know now they should have. They didn't. So what do you do? You just ban, you get rid of every single cop that was there that did not run in there when that guy was shooting. You get rid of them. Is it gonna cost you money? Absolutely. And I don't think there's one citizen in here that will not sign that check. Let them sue. Let them sue. Bye, get rid of them, bye. This is an Atwell state. Are they still service-protected? If they are, see ya, sue away. We don't want them here faced with the same decision ever again. They've already showed you what they'll do, even with the proper training. So please, the, bring in somebody to train the current officers? No! They need to be gone.
Yeah.
Bring in new officers, the state will kick in, you apply for emergency assistance, they'll get, they'll handle your law enforcement, till you start handing, uh, hiring guys here and girls here, right? They'll do that, and you train them. So that's what I have to say about that. They've already demonstrated to you what they will do. Lieutenant Javier Martinez today got out of his car, got in our faces, and wanted to fight us because we told him to put on his seatbelt. Come to find out, he was the first officer in that school.
Professional.
He wanted to fight us, but he would not run in. We have it on video.
I'll show you.
You need to get rid of him. Your police officers, your police officers show up, get out, and they have to push him back in his car. And they left, because we weren't doing nothing wrong. And they left, because we weren't doing nothing wrong at all. And your police knew that. He needs to go, please. Last thing, last thing. If you guys don't get rid of your police department, nothing against you, I commend you for everything you're doing for these residents and children. But I'm gonna teach your residents how to recall you. You all know what recall is. And take my word serious, call Leon Valley, you gotta smirk. I already know who you are, and I know why you gotta smirk, and that's okay.
Chip.
Call Leon Valley and ask them what happened the last time I told the city that I was gonna have you recalled. We had two council people recalled, police chief fired, city administrator fired.
Sir, I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm gonna tell you right now.
Yes, sir.
You wanna start a recall on me, start the damn thing.
That sounds good.
You know what, I'll sign the petition, but I'm, the one thing I'm tired of is people like you coming from outside.
I don't care what you're tired of! We don't care what you're tired of!
Because of the culture here!
Tell us!
You're everywhere!
Well, I'm just, I'm just glad you're here.
Sir, that'll be enough, that'll be enough, or I'll clear, I will clear the chamber, that will be enough. That will be enough. That's right.
Be respectful, man.
I am trying to be respectful.
Don't tell you, don't say you're tired of people like us.
Sir, if you yell out again, I'm gonna have you removed from this chamber.
That's fine, whatever you say.
I lost my niece, and she was one of the victims, and my kid is here. Okay, but don't be disrespectful with him, because he's the one, he's the one person out of everybody. Where's the governor, where's everybody? He's the only person, he's the only person who listens to us. And I know y'all don't know that, I know y'all don't know that, 'cause y'all are not from here, but he's the only person. He's the only person, we have to live it. We have to live it, we're here every day, we wake up here, go to school, we have to send our kids back to school.
Hey, guys, hey, guys. I've been, I've been asked by a parent to put it down on, for his child. Let's just do that for a second, can we, for a second, please?
I, I know that emotions are high. Guys, this is how you get these emotions down, you get rid of your police. That every single officer that was there, not every one of them, but everyone that was there that made the choice to not enter while the shooting was going on, even though they promised in their training, in their active shooter training, they started way back in Columbine, that they would, they promised everybody that they would. They just need to be gone. They should have quit, they have, you guys have, you guys have the power to say bye-bye. I'm begging you, please do that, and ask DPS to come in and help you guys out while you get new officers in, please, thank you.
So I, I would, I'll encourage everybody here in the press, if you're, if you're listening, Google, hold on a second. All you have to do is Google Texas Peace Officer Termination. You will exactly, you will find the very first thing that pops up that tells you how you can terminate a peace officer. We're following that to the T. You can't go against it, because it's a state law.
Can you tell me what happens if you terminate against that state law, what happens?
I don't know, and I'm not, I'm not gonna break the state law.
I will tell, I will tell you what happens.
What is that, how does that make that right?
Okay, I'm gonna answer, this is what happened to you guys.
I'm being honest, and I'm being true.
I know the law you're talking about, and you are telling the truth. Let me tell you what the penalty is for breaking that law. There is no criminal penalty for doing it. It brings you up on civil liability, that's it. And like I said, I don't think there's one person in here that won't sign that check.
But it sets a, it sets a precedence, and the setting of precedence in a, in a group like this, on something like that, when you're going against a law, you know that.
Let me tell you.
The precedence is what we need here.
Please, please, please. Rosa Parks saw a law that carried a criminal penalty, and she said, screw that, I'm gonna break that law.
That's a little different than this.
It is not, it's a law. You're using the law to not fire a cop?
No, not exactly, we're following, we're following the law and what the state says to do.
Right, so this is a law you don't need to follow, you need to fire the cops that, that made the decision not to go in there.
It's a precedent you don't want to set.
If you're in a war, I'm a veteran, if you're in a war zone, and you don't fight, the penalty is death. It still is. If you run away, I can shoot and kill you. All I'm asking you to do is fire them. And let me tell you, the law says I can kill them, but my God says I can't. But if you're on a battlefield with me and you run, I'm gonna shoot you as soon as I can. Even though my God says I can't kill, that's what you're gonna get. I'm gonna violate that law, and I'm gonna seek forgiveness. You fire the cops, you violation of that law, and you seek forgiveness from them. You seek forgiveness from these folks, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
As far as the recall goes, look, if you're not getting rid of these cops, that's a promise, you gotta get rid of them. Later on, you can let me know by email or whatever, if you're for getting rid of the cops or not. If you're for getting rid of the cops, I'll leave you alone, but if you're not, like you, no.
I didn't say that.
Okay, then, then you let me know, later on, you let me know your, your position. But anybody up here that isn't in a position that you're not gonna push getting rid of the cops, I'm gonna do everything in my power to educate the citizens on how to conduct a recall. And that's about the only thing I can do that's legal, right? Okay, thank you. And I'm approachable, you can call or talk to me anytime.
Isma Reiner, sir? Okay. Are there some families? So you want me to go to the Uvalde people next on the list?
Yeah.
Okay. Michelle Proudy?
This is a great setup you have. Okay, on May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two, there were nineteen children and two teachers who were brutally massacred at Robb Elementary. Their lives were snuffed out. And yes, there were several injured. As the evidence slowly and painfully emerges, we are now confident that many of those lives had a chance at survival had only action been immediate and first aid ranger. Our tax dollars fund the city and many departments, including the city police department. In return, we expect a well-organized, professional, competent, and respectable force. What we have instead, what we are traumatized again and again by is an inept, unstructured, national embarrassment of a circus tent full of smug clowns. These clowns continue to cruise our streets, sporting their tarnished badges, and walk around with their heads held high as if they did no wrong. If any of these individuals who were on scene that day had any shred of decency, they would, at a minimum, look these families in the eyes and say that they made a horrible mistake. But I don't believe any of them have, have they? But at best, they should turn in their badges and move on. So yeah, we keep going in circles on this topic. Um, this is because it's approaching three months, and we are still being placated with tidbits or being outright stonewalled, or being given excuses. And the truth is, if no one was speaking out at any of the podiums, no action of any kind would be sought. I don't know this police department's policy is regarding officer-involved shooting, but all of us know that a well-structured department would put their officers on some kind of lead pending investigation, as well as require mandatory mental health evaluation. But nothing common sense has occurred by action of the department or by this governing body. We know you are tired of hearing our pleas and our tirades. We know there are many community members that are not supportive of our efforts. Some feel we have no business fighting for what's right, others complain that we are doing it wrong. And I say to them, by all means, if you are holding on to the playbook for how to get through this, then please share. Regardless, your negative comments are noted, but if you don't have the courage to speak your mind in person to any of these grieving families, looking them in the eyes, then your, your comments have zero value. As Berlinda has said, we are not done. And I will add that we will not be silent, we will not back down, and we sure as hell won't be intimidated. The dead, the wounded, the traumatized, and all their families deserve better than three months of lackluster performances by all parties in question, including some sitting before me. To emphasize our determination, we are submitting formal complaints against specific officers who are at minimum partners in gross negligence. We expect immediate feedback and full cooperation from this governing body who is employed by the people. We are prepared to take this to the next level.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Riza?
Jesse, uh, Jesse, recently, honestly, I don't know how I feel about outsiders coming into, into Uvalde County and bringing these emotions like that. I understand you have feelings and you have the freedom to speak, and you got every right. But we had this happen the last time around, some guy comes in, brings all the cameras, it's all good for like a little fifteen minutes of fame, and maybe you made a change where you're from, but there's a, there's a way to handle things. You know, got two little kids, apologized to them, they had a walkout. You had the young lady here having a argument with somebody. Sometimes I wonder why you shouldn't even address you and just ignore you. I don't know how I feel about that, but I just, I think that's, it's unacceptable. I understand that we need to hold people accountable. We've been trying our best to try to, to hold everybody accountable, but I also understand that there's a, a process. I understand that it may take some time. You look at history, you look at history, and you wonder, George Floyd, you wonder a lot of different things, and, and eventually the time comes where you look at the evidence and you say, I need to hold these guys accountable. Now, if you don't charge them, that changes the spectrum of lobbying, poorly changes it. But in the meantime, while you're gathering the data, that information, you have to sit back and be patient with it. And in order to understand it, you have to ask clarifying questions. I mean, let the people, whoever's here that totally understands how, how the grievance works, when you charge somebody, the grievance, how much time they have, until you fully understand that, and once you've exhausted all those resources, and nothing happens, and someone's gotta ignore them, you come and fight, then the gloves are off. But in the meantime, and if any, you know, when I get done here in a minute, when you guys have a chance, if somebody's very familiar with the process, not by thing or possibility or whatever, but if somebody really understands the process, feel free to educate us on it, 'cause maybe that's what we need. Yesterday, in addition to that, if you can kinda, in a little bit, tell us, if you can, where Mr. Padega stands as far as like his, you suspended him, where he stands in the investigation, how much more time, uh, do you anticipate? Yesterday, we asked, uh, Dr. Harold, uh, we brought up the active shooter, uh, protocol. He couldn't answer, he couldn't tell us how many times they did the drills from twenty-twenty when they adopted the, the program. We asked him from March, they did the training, his old staff conducted the training, not just for the school, but for multiple people, and he couldn't tell us how many times Mr. Rondo or anybody did the thing. I don't know if he just drew a blank, or, but it's failed leadership. And I'd like to, to hear from y'all, I mean, I'm assuming that, that being you're part of the police, you don't just hand it over just to the UCISD, you know, if you run these drills along with them, and how often you run the drills with them. Every month, every so often, and then where you documenting that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing? He did have a good point, I mean, you can, you can do all the training in the world, but if you don't have the heart, you don't have the courage, then you're not gonna go in. That's, that's obvious. Good friend of mine from Batesville, Hector Lisondo, uh, veteran, racked, lost a finger, almost lost a leg, lost people in, in, at war, the Rose High Bomb. He, he's mad, and he's just, he's just, I, I think the problem that you have is you didn't run, run the drill over and over and over where it becomes instinct. And it's a tough lesson, lost a lot of children, lost teachers, it's, it's, it's horrible. But you, we're at this point now, you gotta hold them accountable, but the people that you're gonna hire, the people that are gonna come in, gotta check themselves. You have it in you, and if you don't have it in you, just check yourself out. You, you mentioned that you're conducting an investigation that could take about sixty to ninety minutes. Excuse me, that'd be nice. Sixty, six, sixty to, sixty to ninety days. Dr. Harold, when we asked him if he had considered, uh, an investigation like that, I mean, can't answer for him, but... If you could explain, I know it's a lot of questions, but if you could explain the pros and cons or something like that, can't see a con with it, but if you can kinda tell us that, and the cost, and how did you determine to go with, I think you said it was Jesse Bravo or something like that, that's, how do you determine that you're gonna go with Jesse? And are there a lot of companies that, that, that do this type of investigation?
Sure, I mean, two things I can tell you. One, I mean, we called around to a man that had done an investigation here in Uvalde before. We asked him to give us a name, we also talked to some people in San Antonio, and we got about probably, I don't, I wasn't involved in the prosecution process, but I wanna say there were seven to eight names that were given to us. This guy came highly recommended from different law enforcement agencies, and so that's the one we chose. Also, he, one of his deals was, it will be his people and him doing the investigation themselves. Like I said, nobody from the city will be involved in that investigation. Now, we won't be briefed on anything, it will go back to the city attorney and the city manager on that, and then they will come to us with what we need to do and what we need to change. I mean, he started his investigation, one of the things we're moving into now is to look at our policies. And answer your question on active training, I don't know, but I don't know that it happened to the two times that we've done it in the last four years, in all honesty. There may have been more that I'm not privy to, but I don't know, but two. And each, each time we weren't in charge of it, I think it was run by the school. So I'm just laying the cards on the table. I don't know what the procedures are, I know we have a policy there. I don't know, you know, like I said, I, I don't know what was done at, at that point. But the last one was done and written by Pete Aradondo at the school district, and in that particular deal, he named himself as the incident commander on that active shooting deal. And so, I, I'm not making excuses for anybody, there were numerous, I've said from day one, every agency that was in that hallway has to be accountable. And right now, as it is, the only person who's really started an investigation is us. EPS is doing an internal one, Border Patrol is in the process of, of picking somebody to do so. The Sheriff's Department hasn't done one yet, that I know of, nor, uh, has, but everybody there has to be accountable. But so, I mean, we, we will get these answers, and we will take action on what, what we find.
And the cost?
I couldn't tell you the cost, I mean, I don't, I don't, I mean...
That, that, I mean, it doesn't really matter.
I'm, I'm, I would tell you, it's probably gonna be in, in quite high, you know, in the thousands of dollars.
Have you, have you, I'm assuming that you and the judge and, and, and Dr. Harold, y'all speak, have you recommended something like that to Dr. Harold?
I, I, I've, I've called for everybody to call for an investigation of what went on that day, every agency. I haven't talked to Hal directly about it, but I mean, he knows my feelings, only that we needed to do it. Told him we were doing ours, that we were starting one on ours. And I told Judge Mitchell also.
I'm assuming something like that would be important, uh, so that obviously the more evidence, the more you have, the solid, the more solid your case is gonna be, whatever action you decide to take against every single individual?
Yes, sir.
Good, brother, thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna call the Uvalde people, Roy Mata.
I hold off until we hear from Blau from Tennessee.
Okay. Gabriel Salazar.
May council members, thank you for letting me speak. Uh, my name is Gabriel Salazar, I'm the assistant principal of Flores Elementary. I appear to talk about a different issue.
Okay. You wanna wait?
That's only, that's only agenda. It's one of our agenda items.
Sure, you wanna wait, we'll call you there? Okay. Ms. Trimble?
Hi. Um, Adam mentioned the pond downtown, this square. And I think that's a wonderful idea, although I don't know if those fish can survive in this heat. But something along those lines, I think, would be wonderful. I do think that, uh, we need to really be cognizant of bringing peace to the area in every way that we can. And I am wondering about, uh, the memorials, and I'm assuming that the families are highly involved in that aspect. Um, I'm wondering if the city's, uh, citizens can be involved in that. And if so, I would like to be on a committee. I'm just gonna ask, uh, if I can be put on a committee. I think that there are certain things that oftentimes are decided and they're just kind of decided upon. And I think that, um, it'd be wonderful if outside citizens could be involved, of course, yielding to the families and to the parents first. I'd also like to tell you that Max, uh, from Kerrville, um, he's the artist that has put together all of those monuments at the Cross at Kerrville, has offered his services and has, uh, told me that he would be more than happy to come here and to, uh, share his expertise, uh, what he's learned, what to do, what not to do. And, uh, would like to just be a part of this. Um, he's a very rich resource. And, um, I do have an idea and I'll go ahead and put it out there for now. And that is, I think it'd be wonderful to have a beautiful blazing cross, maybe silver, with twenty-two doves spiraling around it to signify, to honor these children and, uh, family members that, you know, the husband that was lost. Um, I think it could be done rather beautifully and I think it could be done very tastefully. And, uh, I would like to ask the families to consider that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carew?
Good evening, council and, uh, staff members, visitors, family members. Diana Lavelle Carew, citizen of Uvalde, Texas. We keep coming before you. Um, we continue to ask the same questions. We continue to be angry about the lack of answers. And personally, as I listen to these gentlemen from out of town that aren't from here, don't have to live with our tragedy, it's personal. We, it's personal. It, it's not something that happened somewhere, it happened to us. And I always tell people, I can call out my family members, but you can't. This is our family. Uvalde is our community. Yes, we appreciate those of you that are coming from outside, bringing your ideas, shouting your anger, creating some chaos in our city to some extent. We need to shake it up, I know that. But these are our people. And we need to work with them to get this right. And so it angers me to hear, I mean, the gentleman last meeting, like, go away. Let us fight our own battle. This is our fight. And we are more than capable of fighting it. We don't need outsiders to come in and mess it up. Because you're gonna go away and we're still gonna be here.
This probably affects the whole country.
Well, we need
Two weeks before two weeks before Buffalo, New York
They need thanks, you need to thank them, Diane.
I believe in the kids, your kids are your family. These chowards are not your family.
This could happen anywhere. This guy's talking about a president
I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you one more time.
It's okay, I
If you outburst again while she's speaking, you're gonna be removed from here. Whether you like it or not, you're gonna be removed. So if you speak out again when somebody's speaking, you're going out the door. We're gonna show you, we're gonna show the respect.
Believe me, I'm angry at my council. I'm angry at my councilmen. I'm angry at our police. I'm angry at our school district. I wanted to change, but I want to be the one that works with this community to create that change. We do not need the madness
There's that happening.
that's coming from outside. And please, respect the fact that we are telling you we can fight our own fight. I come to this council repeatedly to also ask for accountability, to also ask to do the things that you can do. I understand there's a criminal investigation underway and at some point, I pray, and I know many others do, that there will be individuals that will be criminally charged for what happened on May twenty-fourth. But I know that's outside of your purview, outside of your authority, nothing that you can do in that particular venue. But you do have the ability as an employer to do some things with your employees based on performance, based on expectation of the job that they were hired to do. Last time I was here, I asked for possibly considering desk duty, get them off the streets, because it is insulting to us to see them out there daily like nothing happened, even though something significantly horrible happened. And so again, I'm asking the council if you would please, please do what you can internally, looking at them as employees, following the rules of how you fire a law enforcement officer. And I'm not even saying you need to fire all of them, but you definitely need to hold them accountable to the level at which they participated on that day. And so we keep coming back to you, we will keep coming back to you. I support the individuals that have been working together, uh, Michelle Crowdy, Adam Mathiness, Jesse Riesel, Emma Trimble, Pastor Myers and his wife. We are dedicated to this fight and we're gonna keep coming back and we're gonna keep holding you accountable. And, uh, so we're not going away. And I know you know we're not going away. And we're, we're just gonna continue this fight and we can do it ourselves.
Love has no boundaries. Thank you for all of you who came showing your heart and your love. And we need police officers with the right heart. You're right, they're never gonna run in. If it happens again, they would never run in, because they don't have the right heart.
May I please speak in the part of this man who gave up his speaking position?
Sure. Well, I'm gonna finish, wait, I'm gonna finish with the Uvalde people first and then we'll go back. Pastor Myers?
I just wanna thank you for just a couple of minutes, hopefully, um. The Bible says that we need to honor authority here on this earth. I've been living here in Uvalde for sixty-nine years. I am from Uvalde. And I'm angry at all of you. And it is very hard to honor you when we don't see any results taking place in almost three months. We have always honored the police in the streets, in the car, wherever, in the restaurants, in grocery stores. We've always, my husband has always stepped up the plate and gone up to them and tell them, thank you for your service, for veterans. He's always done that. Now, whenever I see a police officer, I don't know if he was the one, one of the ones in the hallway. So I look away. I don't even wanna look at him in the face. And I, I know that it takes, it takes time to do what you have to do. But there, there comes a time when you have to take action. There comes that you have to take action. Uh, I heard, I heard that, uh, the principal from Rob was reinstated as a principal again, is that correct, sir?
I have no idea, Ms. Cordia. My understanding was reassigned.
From Rob.
She was assigned as assistant director for special education.
She was reinstated?
Not, not for principal.
She's getting a different job, she's working at, I would, at a special education. She got her job back, that's true.
So
But that's the school district that did that.
Why, why would she get her job back when she didn't do a good job when she was there?
You have to ask them.
I'm sorry?
You have to ask the school district. We have nothing to do with that. They reinstated her.
I thought maybe somehow, some way, all of you work together. As the city, as the school, we all work together.
We all try to work together, but we have no say in what they do. It's like their, well, their policy is what they do. It's like we don't consult them on our policies.
So I guess it would be fair to say that my grandchildren that wanted to come and live here with us from Phoenix, four grandchildren, they, they, I don't trust them with the, the board from the, from the school. You guys have nothing to do with that, right?
We have nothing to do with the school.
Yeah, it's, and it, and it's too bad and, and, you know, we need, we need to hold people accountable, sir. Mayor, we need to hold people accountable. And at one time, I think I heard you, a few weeks ago, maybe about a month and a half ago, I think I heard you say, we were at the civic center, you said that it might take up to two years for an investigation, for the investigation?
That's not me, that's what the district attorney has said.
Yes.
That's not me to say that, that's what she told us it might take up to two years.
So meanwhile, sir, all these families, they're getting tired, sir.
We understand.
They're getting tired, they're getting frustrated, they're feeling hopeless. Like me, I, I don't wanna live, leave Uvalde. I'm from Uvalde. I've been here sixty-nine years. I don't wanna leave Uvalde. This is my home and I wanna die here. But I feel uncomfortable when I see a police officer, I feel uncomfortable and I'm not gonna go out of my way to make his life miserable because he can stop me and arrest me. Because he has a badge. But these people, sir, they need to, they need to be accountable. You guys need to do something as soon as possible so that we can feel secure and safe here in our home in Uvalde. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, City Council. When I was in the workforce before I retired, I was a frontline, frontline operator for the solid waste department there where I was located in Arizona. I had a supervisor that would tell us, I don't pay you to think, I pay you to know. I do not pay you to think, I pay you to know. These officers signed up to serve and to protect, and they did not do that. They did not do that. They did not protect and they did not serve. But my question that brings me behind this podium, the chief of police, who does he answer to?
City manager.
City manager? The other day, I was going east, running ninety, and a police officer get behind me from Grove, all the way to Fourth Street, and he was tailgating, I mean, he was right on me. I knew when he get right behind me, he was running my plates. I knew when he ran my plates, he was gonna know who I am, Daniel Myers. Now, I'm not here to make a name for myself, but I live here. This is my community, I live here. We pastor a church here. And this officer, and I didn't, I could get a number, a, a police car number, he followed me, I mean, he was right on me. I don't know if that was an act of intimidation or what it was, but somebody needs to talk to the city manager, tell the city chief of police to not intimidate these people. Don't do that, because we're irritated and frustrated as it is. I felt so close, Mr. Mayor, just slamming my brakes with my phone live and yelling at him, why are you tailgating? But I didn't do that because, as he was, he wanted me to mess up. He wanted to pull me over. And he had the authority to do that because he's a police officer. But that's wrong. That's wrong what he did. That's wrong what he did. And I hope that he doesn't do any else, anybody else of our community like that. This, this happened to me. And it was, it was nice, Mr. Mayor.
I'll, I'll tell you the same thing that I told the family members that told me. You want my cell phone number, I'll give it to you. If that happens, call me. I'll get, I'll get the city manager on the phone or whatever. We're not gonna stand for that, for harassment. I don't, I don't know what, we're not, we're not gonna do that. I've talked, I have talked with our city manager and our police chief about that. And I don't think any council member up here would go along with any kind of harassment by our police department to any citizens in this community. And we're not gonna stand for that.
As of then, it hasn't happened up to now, but it did happen that one time. But, Mr. Mayor, I mean, he was right on me. And that's not ready. Thank you.
Is there any family or anybody from Uvalde before I let anybody else speak from outside that we didn't give the chance to speak? Okay, sir, now you can have the man's time. I didn't see it, I'm sorry.
My name is Rosenberg Prisa and I'm from Uvalde, most of you know me. Yeah, uh, my name is Rosenberg Prisa, I'm from Uvalde, and like I said, most of you know me. And mainly this is, probably I'll address this to, uh, the police chief, uh, Mr. Valerius. And, uh, I know, and maybe I should wait for, it's on the agenda for the, uh, hiring of the assistant police chief. What is it that you're gonna be looking for to make sure? Because I believe, I may be wrong, but didn't Chief Aragorn know work for the city of police of Uvalde? And who actually hired him at that time?
Several city managers and chiefs ago.
Seventeen years ago.
I guess the bottom line is that nobody actually checked into his background.
I don't think any of us were here, the council.
Seventeen years ago, he worked for the Uvalde Police Department.
So my concern is, and, and I know Mr. Valerius, uh, is that you have to really check the background. I mean, actually call the employers, past employers, and I'm not just talking about the first one that comes across. You gotta go ten, fifteen, twenty years back. You know, if they already that old, per se speaking, of age, which hopefully you'll get somebody that has had training, I mean, that really has had training in shootings and everything. Because my personal opinion, I'm also a military member, if you have not experienced anything like that, when it happens, that's when your mind starts just going all over the place. Should I or should not? And let me tell you, it does work like that. And let me tell you, it does work like that. Because I was in one of those situations also. So I'm just going to make sure that the police chief, city manager, will take that time, even if it takes a little longer, but make sure that he is credible, he's going to be hold accountable, and so are both of you, because you were the ones that hired him.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, one more, there's one more citizen outside in the hall. One to come forward.
My respect to your majesty from Anas. No se dejen que vayan. Sean bien tejos para la gloria de los viniun angelitos. We don't have to go to Jerusalem or Bethlehem to be on sacred ground. Uvalde is already sacred ground. Our Father, who is in heaven, is also very present here. Because like a parent, he wants to be with the children who suffer the most. And also, I forgot to say, my respect to the survivors, the teachers, and the student survivors. That was really tough. Let's come face to face with our souls, to all state leaders especially, especially those not present, and to the governor. A los líderes políticos del estado y el gobernador. Estos también no han estado presentes. Ellos han estado presentes. Vamos a enfrentar la conciencia. God has presented you with a sacred opportunity to help these deeply wounded people, and you must keep that in mind. There are huge and sacred wounds here. Nineteen angelical super children and two super teachers. Muy hermosas. Makes this very sacred. Your responsive actions, or God forbid, lack of action, will make you or break you not only in humanity's eyes, but more fiercely in God's eyes. You have inherited tremendous divine responsibility. Leaders, state leaders and governor, God is talking to you through these suffering families. Take a divine hint. Do not be cold nor indifferent, or the lukewarm whom God throws up. God forbid those who try to ignore these suffering families or act lukewarm. God loves his twenty-one angels in heaven as well as these families here on earth. And these families have a great, a great thirst for justice, and God is ready to quench their thirst. He's watching your every move, but most of all, your intentions. Líderes y políticos del estado, what is so difficult about changing the age from eighteen to twenty-one? Qué tanto les cuesta? If one less child is killed, because we made it harder, more complicated, for an immature, dangerous youth to obtain a semi-auto war weapon, it was so damn worth it, don't you think so? We are not asking to ban guns. For one, change the age to a more mature age and keep assault, semi-auto war weapons away from immature, dangerous chilos. Leave the assault war weapons to the military or law enforcement so that they can be feared by these dangerous young killers. I myself am fifty-five years old. As we approach old age, we feel the aches and pains of growing older, a reminder of our deteriorating bodies as we get closer to death. It can be scary. So why not be daring and do something so great for heaven's sake? How much have you to lose for these twenty-one angels? Give these families great and awesome responses. Minimize the chances. Make it difficult for a dangerous killer youth to obtain extremely destructive war weapons. Remember, they choo, they choose these semi-auto war weapons because they're faster and capable of killing more. State leaders and politicians, make Texas a safer world for their children, including your children and everyone's children. Don't allow the smallest chance to have your own grandchildren fall victims to the semi-auto war weapons fired by a dangerous killer youth. You have the divine opportunity to do something awesome, and in this time of awful suffering, you cannot be lukewarm, because this time it was way too much. Remember, twenty-one angelical super children and two superheroes so sadly perished and experienced abandonment in their life's final breath. That night became a very stormy night in more ways than one, and God was crying too. So loud, we heard his great aw through the loud thundering. It was like he was confirming our angels were not alone. Each was embraced by God's loving arms in their greatest time of need, like footprints in the sand. And God had prepared a place for each of these beautiful angels to be saved in the loving kingdom of heaven. And with the greatest perfect love, God opened his almighty arms to receive these brave and super angels. Matthew nineteen fourteen, "Let the children come to me and do not hinder them, for the kingdom of heaven belongs to them." The kingdom of heaven belongs to these beautiful children. Dios nos ayuda.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there one more? Is there? Anita Bush? Anita Bush?
Hi, my name is Anita Bush. I'm president of Victims First. I have had two mass shootings in my family, one where my pillow was murdered, and the other one Stacy survived by running for her life for available. We are not, I'm not from Uvalde, but we are a community of mass shooting victims over twenty years of mass shootings. We have seen pretty much everything that you can imagine. We've helped people, families of deceased, catastrophically injured, those who have been, you know, shot, injured, and survived a mass shooting. For many weeks, we were trying to get local funds that were for immediate needs into the hands of those who needed it most directly intended. We did everything in our power to, to do that. We suggested very strongly that these funds get to the families immediately and without invasion of privacy and in the quickest way possible with a form that was easily understood by trauma brain, which is what people, you know, they have hard, everyone has a hard time after mass shooting, filling out those forms. We also wanted to make sure that nobody was turned away and that people who were truly helped got those funds. When you have designated funds, as, as you do, the funds are already allocated from these local areas, what we've seen and what we've heard over the past week has been very disheartening. We want to make sure that families are not turned away and they're not told that in order to get the funds, they can apply later on, but have to pay a registration fee. We want to make sure that these funds are, are sent out immediately to anybody who needs them. And you have no idea what it's like. You have just no idea what it's like to try to stand again after this, to try to function. I'm here with someone else who survived a mass shooting. I'm here with another person who was shot and still carries the wounds with her. And we can tell you that it's, you know, sometimes people who think they know best know, know the least. And we are begging people to reexamine that form, that intake form, so privacy is ensured. They will not have to name their minor children. They will not have to tell people whether they're in therapy or not, and do it in a way that is, allows victims privacy and dignity. And I'm asking you that please, from all of us, all of us, please do it in the simplest way possible. Don't turn people away. Those funds are all, already allocated for them. The other question I have, what happens if all those funds are not given out? Or is the plan to give all those funds out? If the funds are not all given out, it should go down to zero if it's all for the victims. If it's not, does it go back to the community? Do you know, Mr. Mayor?
First of all, the Rob School Fund, my understanding is that money will go to the victims, one hundred percent, all of them. Now, in answer to your question on the other, we've been working with the Ministry Alliance, Uvalde Volunteer Fire Department, and we, we do have funds there that we've been trying to get to families as they need them, and they tell us, and we're getting them. I've argued from day one with the governor's office and everybody to get people in here, to get these people what they need. And, you know, I know that some of the family members now have advocates that are there for them, that they can call and, and get help and get things they need, but I don't know all the answers of what they're getting and what they're not getting.
Yeah, we've been helping. We've been keeping people on their feet. The Grumby Foundation has been keeping people on their feet. But I'm concerned about the local funds.
I think to clear things up, we, we have nothing to do with the Rob Fund.
No, it's not the Rob Fund. That's going to go to the National Passion Fund, and we know that a hundred percent of what goes in there is going directly to the victims and cash flow.
Exactly, at some point, yeah.
But I'm talking about the local funds from the churches and elsewhere.
It's getting to them. I'm with the fire department, and we, we distribute money about every two weeks, as long as the donations come in, we distribute money to, to all the injured, and now we've included those who were, who lost family. We, we concentrate on the injured. And along with that, I think the VFW, the American Legion, the, I know the Catholic Church, and I'm not sure, I think some other churches, they...
The Catholic Church.
We do it a very private way. We don't allow press. It's very quiet. We're, we're with the families. We have a lot of respect with the families, and, and they are, we are distributing money.
That form...
They just donate to us and give them to us.
Right, that form?
We don't have any forms, man. There's no forms.
There's a form on, for Uvalde?
I don't know what, that's, has nothing to do with us. We don't have forms.
It's very, very long, and it's very invasive.
That, the form may be the one for the Rob conversation.
Yeah, that's not, that don't have anything to do with...
But we have nothing to do with money.
The Hope for Uvalde has a form on there. It's an intake form.
I don't even know if it is that. We don't know if that is.
They said it's Ministry Alliance.
On the eleventh, they're going to have the meeting again at the Fairplex, so I encourage everybody to go, because that's how they're going to distribute all the funds.
That's for the Rob Fund.
That's for the Rob Fund.
That's different. I'm talking about...
I don't know, but we'll look into it. I mean, we know the Ministry Alliance will ask.
And I would really like to find out, I mean, if somebody could, because there's a lot of misinformation. And just to clarify, what happens, is that fund, are the local immediate needs, emergency needs funds, is that going to go down to zero because it's all allocated for the victims? And if it doesn't, does it go back to, into the community?
Okay, my understanding for the Ministry Alliance, and again, I have no say there, but their fund is there for the families that need it, to help them whatever they need. If it goes down to zero, it goes down to zero. If it, if it, if it's, there's money left over in there, it will be a community still to help members of the community as they need help. That was my understanding.
Isn't all that, aren't those funds already allocated for the families?
The, the, my understanding for the Ministry Alliance is coming from different churches around the country to tell them to use for the families or to use for the community as you see fit needing to be used. That, I can't answer that because I'm not involved in that side of it, but...
I, I've understood that there have been families turned away, so please look into that and please...
I will, I don't know.
Don't turn anyone away. People need help.
I'm, I'm going to do my plugging in for all the press. Uvalde Volunteer Fire Department has a PayPal charitable fund. We put it out there. We, we accept all donations, and we write checks to the students' families directly. We will take it personally.
Ma'am, I'll give you my number before we leave tonight, too, and I'll try to get you answers.
Is that...
Yes, sir, you're our...
Hi, guys. So I just want to take a minute, actually, just look at all y'all. Last I remembered, we were all human here. Everybody's got a beating chest, right? Y'all got a heart, y'all got a family here. Might show in different manners. Our love might be different spectrums, and I look a little different, and I might be from the country, from the city. Just because I look like an outsider doesn't mean I'm not a human just like you. It doesn't mean I don't have children and love them just like you. I'm here because I'm passionate about this city, and I don't want it to happen in mine. I'm also here because, do you guys accept federal funds?
Good luck if you get them.
The fact of the matter is that these guys do accept federal tax money, which means that they are actually employees for the whole nation. They represent the city, yes, but they...
No, stop right there. I get no federal funds.
Y'all don't accept federal funds here?
Not, not that I get.
Y'all county, does I accept federal funds?
Well, that'd be across the street.
And y'all, and y'all would be a part of the county, correct?
Well, the city, bro. I don't know any federal funds we've got.
You do get, okay, so you do get federal funds. Okay, so that's why I'm here. It's because the, the police here are public employees. Hold on, I'll say this.
Most of that is going to be from the state, but we do get, we get funds from the state. We get funds from federal funds.
Thank you for heading that for me. Well, I mean, they were saying we didn't accept, you didn't accept any...
Well, you know, for grants and things like that.
Okay, so we do accept federal funds, and the, the police officers here are public employees that are also part of that accepting of those federal funds, which means that money's coming out of my pocket as well, which means I have just as much here, maybe not as invested, because I don't pay the, you know, city tax or county taxes, that I own property right here. But I'm right down the road, guys. Born and raised in Texas, Christian man, and my mom taught me to treat every person as my neighbor. And the sad part is that we're coming here to try to show love, try to bring exposure to the situation, and I'm getting called things like those other people and those guys with the cameras, when we're only here to help you. And so I hope that we could close that gap between the outsiders and the people, because we're all humans with a heartbeat, and we all have children and love ones. I will go with last day.
Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for doing that.
Is there anybody that was on here that we didn't call? Was this man? Anyone more? Oh, and then you were next. I apologize.
Sorry. You're calling your phone. Go ahead, please.
I was born and raised here in Phoenix. I know, I know most of y'all. It's sad that our, our city's being divided. I'm not saying everybody, but some of y'all that come up here screaming and yelling is not going to get anything done. All they're going to do is going to sit there and look at you unless you can talk civilly and get to your point and say it in a way that they would understand how you feel. That's how we get it across. That's how we do it. That's how Uvalde does it. We don't come over here yelling and screaming and, yes, we might get angry, and they'll stand there and they'll be like, "Okay, calm down," like I was just told right now. And I had to go to another room, and they put me in timeout. And that was Chief Roche, who had to do that, because somebody was telling the officers, "Take off your mask." They don't have to.
Take off your dim blue lined masks.
You told the other officer to take off his mask.
Use that mask as well.
I'm talking. You're not up here. I didn't address you. Anyway, like he told me to shut the F up, and I did. Shouldn't have, but I told him that. Because guess what? He's not from Uvalde. We get these people that put on the news, "Hey, this was done that way, this was done that way." How do they know all of its truth? We still have another investigation that is going on, but yet we're going to have people come up here and yell it, scream at our council members, at our mayor, at our superintendent, at the board members, at our police officers? You know what? I was harassed last week by DPS. He played chicken with my, a vehicle I was in with three women, which for me was one of them, an eighty-nine-year-old woman and two children. And then a sheriff deputy got behind them. I called nine-one-one because we didn't know who the other car was. For five miles, they did that. Between eleven and twelve o'clock at night. Why aren't we arguing with DPS? I know DPS for a fact was one of the first ones there because they're all the way down Highway eighty-three. Every corner, all the way going to La Pryor. They're at the first entrance, they're at the third entrance, they're over here by that new building for the, what is it, River?
River Authority.
River Authority. They're always parked there, two or three. And I know for a fact they were there that day. Why aren't we arguing with them? They were the first ones there. I just saw a news report, three minutes after, two minutes after the shooter got there, DPS was there. Why aren't we arguing with them? I'm, I'm a veteran. I never went anywhere. I stayed in San Antonio at Fort, at Fort Sam. Would I have done? Yes. Would I have stood in the way? Maybe. I don't know. I was not there, and I didn't know what, I wouldn't have known what I would have done. And the military, yes, you do sign the dotted line, and you get trained. In the military, yes, you do sign the dotted line, and you get trained for that. The training begins at the police academy. That's where we need to start incorporating that. Incorporating what situations might be handled like this. Because we in Uvalde never thought this could happen here. We in Uvalde thought we were away from Austin, Dallas, Fort Worth, Houston. I mean, come on, Uvalde's a small town. Canepa's right there. So is Saban now. You know, we're a small community that have all these communities around us, and we treat each other nicely, respectfully. I mean, yes, they're gonna have the police accountability, but they have a process they have to go through. Just like at any job in the world that you go to, any job, you have to go through your chain of command in the military, am I right? You have to go through your chain of command, and this is our chain of command, right here. We're going through our chain of command. It's not gonna be fast, it's not gonna be quick, but we still have another investigation that DPS is the one investigating it. Colonel McCraw was the first one out there pointing fingers here instead of saying "we", because there were DPS, border patrol, sheriff, the PD, and the school district PD. Why didn't he say "we"? Why did he just say "Uvalde PD"? Hey, you know, he's the one at fault. Why didn't he say "we"? In the military, we don't do "we", one. We don't go, oh, Mr. Somora, you did it. No, we did it. Because there's no "I" in our military, there's all of us. Our community needs to come together, and we're not. And it's sad because I grew up here. My dad taught thirty-two years in Room One at Rob Elementary. I remember I was able to walk at night with my dad to go home. He was my teacher. And we can't do that nowadays. And somebody had to tell me, those times are gone. Kids are being raised differently. There's a lot of getting on the phone, a lot of playing these games like he was a gamer, was directed the wrong way, was treated wrongly in school, been bullied. Us, we were bullied in school, they beat you up. It wasn't words, it wasn't on the phone, they'd kick your behind. How do I know that? Because I was almost one of those. But I had good friends. I had people behind me. Nowadays, they don't do that. Now they verbally abuse you. They verbally abuse you to your face, they verbally abuse you on the internet, they show pictures, degrade you. And we're doing the same thing like at the board meeting, degrading the ex-supervisor. Well, that ex-supervisor, I'm gonna tell you, white man in nineteen seventy-one hired a Mexican by a phone call, and that Mexican was my father. I need a job. You're got it. Deal with the paperwork later, John Harrell. I highly respect that, because back then, things weren't like that always. And I want our town to come together. But these people that wanna come and scream at y'all and yell at y'all, that's not right. If we wanna get things done, we need to talk. He stopped, I stopped him at a board meeting, and I appreciated him. Because of all the abuse that people have done, because it is abuse, yelling at them, screaming at them is not getting us anywhere. All these cameras are watching us, and all these people screaming and yelling and that aren't from here, you look like clowns and making us look bad. And you're tearing our town apart, and you're dividing our town. And it is true, because I've spoken to a lot of people, and I know people who wish that this would stop. Y'all, I mean, excuse me, some of y'all are sitting here, you're from Uvalde. Y'all are from Uvalde, you're not, she is, they are, they are. And we had some people that were not in Uvalde, we have a small community. We need to be in here, too. That teacher, I've known him for the longest time, since nineteen ninety-three. I've known Irma, and they've known my son. I had ex-students who lost their babies. It affects everybody in this town. In this town right now. You say no, but you don't personally.
The whole country is affected by this.
No, I'm speaking. The whole country feels it, but nobody feels it worse than the people that know each other. That's an ant right there next to you.
I came eighteen hundred miles to support this land, these children.
You can, you know what? Hush, hush, hush.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna.
Yeah, well, some of, some of y'all did, some of y'all did. Not everybody.
These outsiders, remember.
Yes. I'm not talking about you.
Okay, thank you.
But we need to come together, and we need to come and talk respectfully and rightfully to these gentlemen up here, just like they said, they're not, you're, how much do you get paid?
Fifty bucks.
Twenty-five dollars.
You tell me, for twenty-five dollars, fifty dollars? And they wanna do it for us and take time out of their day, out of their family, and sit here and listen to us? We should give them that respect. And just because things aren't done like right now doesn't mean that it's not gonna get done. It's gonna get done, but it does take time, just like everything else in this world. And God will provide us with what we need. And I wanna apologize for that, because I feel bad that you were treated that way. My parents taught me never to say no to anybody, to be talking to everybody. My mother, back then, the Jehovah's Witnesses would knock on your doors. She opened the curtain and said, "No." And this was always a joke, and they would laugh, but I cried that day, because you can't say no. That's how they taught you. That's what they showed me. And that's how this town is. You help each other, you be there for each other, no matter what. You see somebody broke down, you go and help them. If you can't help them, you find somebody. And one day, my dad did get that when he drove from San Antonio over here, and it was one of his ex-students. And my dad beamed because he was given that opportunity to see one of his ex-students. Thirty-two years was given to Rob and Benson Elementary here in Uvalde because of Mr. John Harrell. He was city mayor at one time, and he, or was he manager?
Both.
And I got to work with him again, well, I got to work with him two times for the school district, and then when I worked for Mr. R. Fugus, because he was the city attorney at the time. And I would appreciate those that aren't from Uvalde to speak respectfully to these men, because when you leave, this is what we have. When you leave, this is what we have to deal with when y'all go home. So, you know, these police officers, yes, they will get what they are needed because of the fact of the process, and plus, they only need to hire. So.
Keep on talking. I got one.
And, and you know, that once they get hired, then, then the process will keep on going.
I have one question for you. The young man that was sitting next to me who is afraid to go to school because he thinks the cops ain't gonna do nothing, and we're asking these gentlemen to set a precedence by firing these guys, and you think that's bad?
No, I'm not thinking that's bad. No, you're not listening to.
How long do you wanna wait for the process before that kid feels comfortable going back to school? He should have never dealt with that.
You know, like I said, whenever they, you wanna, you want them to have accountability. Okay, fire the police officers, but are you gonna put on, are you gonna go to the academy and go put on the uniform?
I've done that, I put on the uniform, and I would not cower down.
All right, that's it. Time out. That's it, sir, you're, you're out, you're leaving the chambers now. Thank you, you're leaving. Anybody else out, outburst again? The lady was speaking, you can leave. You can leave now. I don't know, you're not, we're not, we're done, we're done. This lady's the last one to do our open comments tonight, and then we're gonna go to our business, but we're done.
More comments, if y'all don't mind.
Sure, Adam, we'll give you that respect.
Yeah, go ahead. But I'm done, but I, I do appreciate what y'all have been. Y'all still sit here, y'all still are going through this with all of us from Uvalde, and I understand that other people hurt, other people think that they don't know Uvalde.
So I do wanna say something. I'm not sure who she, that lady is, but we've been fighting. It sounds like she's fighting for the cops more than the community. I don't know that.
No, that's for everybody.
I'm, I'm speaking. Now I'm speaking. So I will say, I've talked to every single family member, and they tell me not to stop fighting. Do not stop fighting, don't shut up.
Yes.
And I've been some of the ones that's been yelling. And you're saying they're yelling and all this stuff? I've been doing that, too. But we've been asking for more people to come, to protest with us, to stand with us. It's like ten people, fifteen people out of the fifteen thousand or twenty thousand, but if there's something free, they're there. So this is for the children, but I stand with the parents, and they back me up, and they're telling me not to stop, don't, don't stop fighting. They don't wanna come, they don't wanna come right now, they can't. I understand you have a relationship with the cops or whatever it is. We're all in this together, but they tell us not to stop fighting, we're not gonna stop fighting. These guys are coming in, maybe it's necessary for something to happen, but I yell, they yell, sometimes we're passionate about this. We just want something to get done.
I can understand the parents, and I can understand the community here, but others that, you know, you can't pick and choose. Y'all, your community, you're the ones.
We're asking you to come and help and stand with us.
I'm not saying I'm protected.
I haven't seen you protest. We've been here, we've been protesting in the heat.
I have not protested because, for one, I'm divided.
That's your choice. I'm with the families. I get emails saying, please continue to fight till something happens. Fifteen people, twenty people, we're asking for more.
And I can understand you protesting, and I can understand you as part of the family and part of the families here. But the part of the family is part of the family. There's some people that come in here and they degrade these gentlemen. That's what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about.
For speech.
I'm not, I'm.
For speech is a controversial speech, not a nonviolent speech.
Good. We're getting out of that again, we're not, we're not gonna do it again. Adam, we'll let you finish. We, we've cut you all three times, so we'll let the man behind you speak, and after that, we're going to city business.
We're in, we're in this together, I'm sorry, but I'm just saying that we need more people to stand up. We've been calling on the people, family members want us to continue fighting, please join us so that we can get some answers. It seems like it's been working, she says it's not getting anywhere. I believe it is, and we're gonna keep fighting.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, amen. Thank you for having us. The right one.
Thank you for standing up.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, ma'am. Thank you, city manager, for allowing me to talk. I don't believe I need a mic, I think my voice escalates enough.
Yes, sir.
And I just want everybody here, the citizens of Uvalde to know is that us outsiders that you guys seem to not like and push us away, we feel the same pain that you do, and we're all American citizens. And yes, we are divided as a people, not only in Uvalde but in America as well. And I've tried to push it so many times to wake so many people up, only to be labeled and pushed away and called many derogatory names that you guys wouldn't even think of, okay? And I understand there is a process with you gentlemen, I do, I truly do, but there needs to be an expedition in, in that process. And these people need to know that you stand for them and that you're really gonna do something for them. And even if that means transparency and allowing them to know step-by-step process and how that's getting done, and how you're making movement toward getting that end result. Sometimes the only thing to really keep you bonded are the small things that really matter, and if it means mere communication, then that's what we need to be doing for the people of Uvalde. And the memorials that need to be sitting over there at Town Square, those need to be made out of gold, marble, and any other fine metals that you can think of, and it doesn't need to come out of these people's pockets. In my opinion, it needs to come out of three hundred and seventy-six officers' pockets. That's what I think. Neither one of those officers need to be, be paid. And that gentleman right there is a direct reflection just earlier of how the leadership acts in this, in this community for the, for the PD.
Shame on him.
And also, the lady that spoke over here earlier about the DPS harassing your citizens, I got video footage of that, and if you'd like that, city manager, I'd be more than happy to give that to you. The last time I was out here, DPS followed me, wrote down my vehicle number, wrote down my identity, followed me to the Billy Bob, sat there while I had lunch, and then literally stood up and wrote all my vehicle information around and followed me for the rest of town. And that was right after our communication. So your DPS is doing stuff out here to these people, and you wanna talk about creating disdain between the community and people? It may not be your officer, but it was that gentleman earlier, but it is also the state PD here. And who has control of that? Who has the communication between their leadership to make that change and make sure that they're not doing the same thing and creating more divide amongst the people? The people sit here and talk about officer safety, officer safety, officer safety, the big blue line, that thing that that gentleman wears on his mask and it just creates my American flag that I lost brothers for, and a lot of us veterans here fought for and lost brothers for. And he has the audacity to walk around like that.
Shame.
It's not protecting the wrong person.
There needs to be change, and I understand that you gentlemen are making change, but it needs to be expedited, and these people need to be in that process, even if it means being in the note. I think you owe them that, and I think that's fair. But I do stand for people in Uvalde, and I do feel your pain. Whether you think I don't or I do, I do, I promise you. And I would stand in front of you before any of these officers would ever even give their own lives to protect you, I'd give my own for you. I promise you that. For all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, city manager, thank you, ma'am.
Do you have a comment?
Yes, sir.
I got a. I don't know who that lady was that spoke earlier, she said she was in the service and, I thank her for her service. Everyone appeared when the city council chose to be here. I chose to be a part of this government body, come May. Unfortunately, we had a tragic incident on May twenty-fourth. It involved, obviously, several agencies, one on this, our local police department. You know, we have these people from out of town, what have you. That only tells me that the world is watching what we're doing. The country is watching what Uvalde is gonna do in this situation. I was listening to some of the comments. Cultural change, absolutely. We need to have a change within our local government, and I'm talking about the departments within the police agencies in Uvalde. There needs to be a change. It ain't business as usual in Uvalde. It can't be. We can't afford it. Our children, our families, our communities cannot afford business as usual. There needs to be change, and there will be change, and it is gonna take some time. We need to navigate through this process, we need to know where we fell, and it's pretty obvious to say, well, they didn't do anything. Well, my question is, why not? Why didn't you act? You know, we see the video, it's pretty obvious, but, you know, it goes a little bit deeper than that. There's leadership involved, and those. There's leadership involved, and those leaders, leaders need to be held accountable for their subordinates. Cause a subordinate is gonna follow the leader. That's the way it works. You know, and so if, if they see a leader that's not moving, that's not making a decision, very few followers will actually step up. Uh, but there needs to be change. Uh, I appreciate all the comments that were made here tonight, whether you're from Uvalde or not, but that just only tells me that the world is watching to see what Uvalde is gonna do. This is a situation that's affected not only our community, but our country, our state. And we need, we need to, and we're gonna act on it. We're gonna hold people accountable for it. We, as a city council, owe it to the communities in Uvalde. And this community, you know, they say we're close-knit, we're a tight-knit family. We stick together. For us, the only people I see here are the victims' families. They need support. They need people to come out and support them, at least stand in the audience, stand in the hallways and say, just, you know, your actions speak loudly. If this place was full, I can understand Uvalde is close. Uvalde is being supported by its community. But who's here? The victims. And I feel for them. I really do. But, uh, we're gonna get past this. This will pass. And I believe that decisions, the right decisions are gonna be made, but we just let, let the process take its course, and then we'll, we'll see how everything turns out, and we hope that everything is for the better for Uvalde cause our city deserves, our community deserves nothing but the best. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Item five, consent agenda, five A, B, and C. Consider an act on the minutes of the July twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two regular city council meeting. Consider payment of bills over five thousand from July twenty-second, twenty-two through August fifth, twenty-twenty-two. And five C, consider request from IT Department to decommission outdated hardware.
I make a motion to approve consent agendas presented.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Lovano, second by Councilman Balki. I'll abstain on five A. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item six, report, six A, report, uh, Councilman Steve Balki provide an update on the budget process for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three.
Uh, we met yesterday in our agenda packet. You will, um, you know, we've established our revenues and also established expenses. Not every department got everything they wanted. It was just more money than, you know, than we can generate, so we hit the most important ones. Though I think the real key is that, and we'll discuss it tonight, we have lowered our tax rate. Our current effective tax rate is sixty-six point five-five. We're proposing to lower it to sixty-one point seven, which is about four point eight-five. Our, our percentage-wise, a little over seven percent we're gonna lower our tax rate. You know, does that mean you're gonna get a lower tax bill? This is just what will go against your evaluation. But we, we've come down every year on our tax rate, and we're doing it again this year. That's it.
Thank you. Item seven, matters related to, uh, seven A, consider resolution proposing a property tax rate for year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, set a public hearing on such proposed tax rate. Setting a public hearing on the proposed, uh, year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget and setting a public hearing for citizens' input on projects to be considered for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget. Public hearing will be held August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, and we'll have a roll call vote. All those in favor of that?
It's just the not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
Yeah. Won't go beyond that. It could still possibly be another.
Good.
Councilman Balki saying that some things are not, uh, problematic, but that's the same. And you'll have more detailed budget presentation as we find.
Okay. So we need to do a roll call vote? Councilman King? Alright, do, we need to make a motion or just a roll call vote?
Oh, you gotta do a motion.
Okay, I make a motion to accept seven A.
Second.
Motion made by me, second by Councilman King. We'll do a roll call vote now. Councilman King?
Aye.
Councilman Lovano?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Councilman Zamora?
Aye.
Councilman Balki stepped out, but we can. So we have, we have a call, so we're good. Seven A passes. Item eight, eight A, consider the request for a special use permit for an accessory dwelling. The property is located in NCB two sixty-four, Leona Acres subdivision, block one, lot fourteen, City of Uvalde, Uvalde County, Texas.
This is an accessory dwelling unit which we commonly call a granny club, and this one actually is going to be for a granny to move into. Um, we sent out eleven letters to the neighborhood. All eleven were signed for. Um, we got one response back from the letters, uh, in approval. And we had one, uh, the community come and speak in approval for this case. It passed unanimously by the President.
Okay. We'll open a public hearing at seven fifty-two. And if no one's here to speak against it, we'll call it seven fifty-two and a half and close the public hearing. Recommending for discussion and decision on application.
Motion approved. Item eight.
My second.
Motion made by Councilman King, second by Councilman Zamora. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item eight B, consider request of the City of Uvalde applicant to amend Title seventeen zoning of the Uvalde Code of Ordinance regarding definition of owner-occupied property and recreational vehicles, City of Uvalde, Uvalde County, Texas. Step one.
This is part of the one we tabled the last time, and I said I would bring it back in part. So, um, this is just definitions, and in particular, we didn't have a definition of owner-occupied properties, and that is one of the conditions of the special use permit is that it be owner-occupied. So this gives us that definition. We also, um, have made changes in the town regarding RVs, but we haven't had an update or permission what that is. This is just to add those definitions to our zoning code.
So it's not changing anything at this point?
Not changing anything. It's just adding definitions.
Okay.
And it did pass unanimously.
Okay. So open a public hearing at seven fifty-three. If anybody speaks, we'll close the public hearing at seven fifty-three and a half. So we'll reconvene, meeting for discussion and decision on application.
Motion one twenty-eight.
Motion made by Councilman Zamora, second by Councilman King. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item nine, new business, consider request from UCISD and Gabriel Salazar, Principal of Flores Elementary School, to change the direction of traffic on Schwartz Street.
Well, uh, my name is Gabriel Salazar. I'm the Assistant Principal of Flores Elementary.
You can take that out here if you need to.
So the reason I'm here to speak to you gentlemen today is, um, our campus is gonna be structured a little bit different this year. We have our curriculum and instruction staff housed on the south side of the campus. We're gonna have our teachers and students, I'm sorry, housed on the north side of the campus. We're gonna have our teachers and students housed on the south side of the campus. Currently, right now, Schwartz Street runs one way from east to west. Normal school year, that is not a problem because we were dropping off and picking up only one grade level there, and we were able to have traffic cleared within ten minutes, right after school, ten, fifteen minutes, and there is no more backup traffic. The issue with it last year, of course, the backup traffic was on Getty Street. This school year, we're gonna have two grade levels there. If we have that short street in the same direction, backup traffic is gonna be on Getty Street, but we're gonna have fifth and sixth grade parents picking up and dropping off their kiddos. So we're requesting that we change the direction so that that way it runs from west to east. And so that way the backup traffic, because there is gonna be backup traffic, I'm not gonna lie, it's gonna, it's gonna happen, but it will at least be on High Street instead of on Getty Street. And, uh, we've already come up with a plan. Mr. Brian Fettis is the campus principal. Uh, we've been meeting in regards to how we're gonna make it work for our kiddos this year. Uh, we've already come up with a plan. We've, we've said that we're gonna make that double lane where he and I will be out there. We're going to be directing the traffic, fifth grade on one side, sixth grade on the other side, and then just have them exit onto Getty Street. So the request that we're having is that you change the direction from east to west, to west to east.
Certain times of the day or full time?
Uh, if you'll leave it the way it is certain times of the day. So I think it runs from maybe seven to nine, and then again, it runs from maybe two-thirty to four.
Okay.
And then I think you recommended we do a right turn only on Getty.
At Getty Street, there will be on Schwartz, which is the south side of the school, that it would be a right turn only because it's so close to the intersection, the light intersection, that it's gonna take a long time to get into that. To turn during those hours only.
Okay, so do we need to add that to it? So I make a motion to change the direction of the street with the right turn only?
During those.
During those, during the hours, the street will be one way? Motion made by me, second by Councilman King. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Nine, thank you. Appreciate it. Nine B, consider request from IT Department to proceed with the lease agreement for a printer for the Public Works Department.
Good evening. Um, this is another lease agreement that I'm asking that you guys consider. And, uh, first, that recommendation is going to be for Lone Star copiers. Um, we've had issues, uh, hardware-wise with the, uh, other vendors. Uh, we've had supply issues. Um, one of the main advantages of going with Lone Star copiers is also the preventative maintenance that they perform on a monthly basis, which of course prevents any issues from happening, um, before they actually happen, unless it's a total breakdown. But in, in those instances, you pass where they actually will bring out another device and swap it in. So we're not at a, at a loss or disruption of service.
Any questions?
This was in our budget, Mr. DPS?
Yes.
Motion approved. I'm second.
Motion made by Councilman King, second by Councilman Lovano. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item ten, ten A, request from Councilman Zamora. All those Zamora discussed the one-acre contract.
Nineteen, nineteen.
Oh. Well, nine C, didn't we, didn't you wanna table that till you got the, we need to table nine C while they get the information on the contract. So we need to table. We're gonna do it. We just have to get all the paperwork done right. So we'll table nine C to the next one.
We, we can't consider the donation if you guys do the paperwork? Well, you can't approve the contract. You do whatever you, you want other than that. We just donated, right?
Table it till you get the information that you need.
Yeah, I mean.
We're still gonna get the donation anyway.
Yeah.
They're, they're still gonna give us the donation. We're just working on a few items in the contract. I'm a little worried about everything. She did clear up some of that places after me.
I saw your email.
I know we're trying to have a chance to it, but if we can approve going ahead with this donation, then we can work on the contract. So that way we can get this in a timely fashion, uh, because we're trying to do it for the children to get something for them to be able to do. Because the children are-
If you don't approve the contract, I don't care.
Well, we can approve nine C subject to the city attorney negotiating the contract.
Is this to replace?
So that's what you were gonna, that's the motion you were gonna make. So I'll second your motion.
Is this to replace the equipment or the play equipment?
Yeah, and that's what I was gonna show you.
Do you have time for re-present?
Sure, we do.
Unfortunately, the wooden structures at the De Leon and Esquerra Park, as much as I would love to keep them there, they're being vandalized. It's on the second page.
Yeah.
Uh, and the wooden structure is falling apart, um, just because it's wooden and weather. Kids playing on it. There's splinters, wood breaks, you have screws to get. I would really love to keep them because I know our building trades did keep them, but unfortunately, they are becoming a danger, and since we have this opportunity, Kaboom Plays Eight, they're willing to donate, to rejoin both parks, De Leon and Esquerra Park. Right now, we're working on the De Leon one, which is about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that they're gonna be donating to us. And the best part about this is that the kids design it, and you'll notice on that first page, kids design it. They tell you the colors, um, what they wanna see, swings, et cetera, et cetera. And so Kaboom comes in and sits down with the kids, they say, "Give us your dream, Play Station." And then they develop it, and then they bring it in, and it's a six-foot turnaround.
Okay. Well, Councilman King made a motion to approve nine C subject to city attorney.
Second.
Working out the contract. Second by Councilman Balki and me. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Move all of them.
Nine D is, uh, I thought y'all did this last week.
Yeah, we did the other one last, last year.
Man, I don't know, we're good, other than we can ask for extra support, but I mean, I can tell you yesterday morning, you had Chase come right through the middle of downtown Uvalde at ninety-five miles an hour. We were not involved in it, but he came right through the middle of town at seven AM in the morning. So when school starts, that's something we're gonna have to be very aware of. So.
The parade has started again.
Yeah. Well, I can tell you from Bracket B on that area that foot traffic is unbelievable. So.
Read it again. I'm, I'll second you.
Motion made by Councilman Balki, second by Councilman King. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item ten, ten A, discussion, ten A, request from Councilman Lovano to discuss the one-acre tract, land donation of city property of community health development, incorporated property located adjacent to the V of Corp side.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, last council meeting, we had the donation for the, uh, community health. They wanted to see if you could donate on that acre or two, one acre. Um, it was brought up to us that, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, Andy had already approved the city, that they were interested in buying it. So I talked to Mr. Gonzalez. I told him, "Let's come back to the city council, give us more information on what you're gonna do, and let's see what we can do to work with you."
Zamora, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, so we had, I know, Mr. Mayor, you weren't here last time, right? So the last city council was here. Kinda, you know, the, the request was from, uh, CHTI or Community Health Development for that property, right? We had asked about inquiring the property probably two months prior to their request, right? So, you know, we, as, as a, as a, and the city council also, uh, we're here because, you know, we want to purchase. We, we acquired about purchasing pro, uh, property, right? To pay taxes, right, for, for the city, right? It'll turn around and you'll see the, right? So, you know, what we planned, uh, you know, we, we have, uh, a business venture that we have that we will, you know, we employ people, right? We would like to expand, right, and, and have that property or purchase the property, not that, sorry, excuse me. Uh, so, I mean, I understand that, that the, you know, uh, community health development asked for it, right? Given they're gonna create a daycare for their employee, right? Not really helping the community, just for their employees. You know, but in that request, you know, I don't know, what is, what are they gonna do? Um, you know, are they gonna, do they have a building plan? You know, is there a time limit? And do they have a budget, right? Cause I mean, you're talking about property that taxes could be received, you know, to the city, right? So, you know, we're willing to purchase it. I mean, this is really the request and why we're here.
I think, I had to meet and be in, in, uh, meeting with Judge Williams the other night. I talked to him this afternoon.
One of the questions Mr. Gonzalez was asking is, do they have the funds to build it? We, we were hoping you'd be here to answer a question.
She does. They've already been given.
They already gave it to Grant. Uh, Mike, she was gonna build a daycare. There's a daycare right next to her on the other side of the street. Why don't you, they use that daycare and pay them? Why, why should we give them that time? That's the other question. Why can't they just contract with that daycare? It's already there. It's functioning. It's working. You know, why build a new one? They just contract with them. That should be better for them versus us giving them a property. Uh, the other question I had for my other was, is it gonna take- The other question I had for Mayala was, is it gonna take you two or three years to build it? What, if, what happens if it changes? We donated to the land, in two, three years you don't do nothing, are you gonna sell it to somebody else, are you gonna sell it to Mr. Gonzalez now? It belongs to the city. Even if we give it to her, should we say, you know what, with the condition, you don't sell it, you give it back to us if you don't do nothing in four or five years? I mean, that's only logical questions that we can ask.
And, I mean, I think the questions you're asking are valid, and maybe we need to table this out till that Mayala come or that the Gonzalez's come back and we can answer the questions that you're asking. I mean, I think that's a fair assessment there.
Can, can we outright sell or do we have to?
You can give it to, give it, but you have to give it.
Right.
But my suggestion is that you're gonna do something with this property directly, right? Whether you give it away or what you sell it.
Well, now we're.
You're gonna do something with it, right? My suggestion is get it surveyed. Yeah, that you're gonna have to do that before you do anything anyway. So, let's just get it surveyed. And you probably ought to get it appraised as well.
Appraisals in the works.
Okay.
Awesome. We're getting a survey as well. That was one of the industrial park, but I can add that one to the list. So.
I think what they're asking for, talking handy, is just a fair shake. You know, if we sell it, you know, and we say we want X dollars, we'll buy for that or, you know, I do want, we'll do that, but I agree with city attorney.
We need to get it appraised and, and surveyed so we know what we got. Because we don't know if it's one acre, if it's one point four acres, or what it is really, I guess.
The other thing is, as I said, if we donate it to the clinic, are they gonna pay tax on it? So, we're gonna lose property, then there's not gonna be tax, which is money coming back to the citizens, back to Uvalde. Mr. Gonzalez, if he buys it outright or bids on it, he's gonna have to pay tax on it. And it'll probably be a business tax, I think he's gonna expand his business, I hope so. That'll be more tax money for the citizens that develop. I mean, we need to really look at it and, and see what's gonna benefit the citizens of Uvalde better.
You wanna come back again?
This was just discussion here.
It was just discussion.
So, yeah, so I mean, let's. I mean, I don't think we do anything till we get the appraisal and the survey.
Probably get time when we get the appraisal.
Yeah, okay, I don't think, I think we'll be right back where we are to get that back.
We have one more for speaking on this?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening, Councilman, what are you doing? Don't defund the police, we're not Seattle, we're not Chicago, Illinois. Oh, ten C. I wanna thank you, Councilman Sumora, for an honorable word. You told the Gonzalez's at the last meeting that you would bring it up and have that. Thank you very much. I guess this is for then, why was the request by Mr. Gonzalez who was interested in acquiring this one acre property arbitrarily dismissed by the city staffer?
I don't know that I would say it was arbitrarily dismissed, but we, we considered it, we talked about it amongst ourselves, we decided that we didn't think it was for sale.
So, you didn't think it was for sale and just blew it off?
Well, and, and, yeah, I guess, I guess it was dismissed, yeah.
And that was two months prior.
Two months ago, yeah.
So, two months go by, did the same staffer advise anyone on the council that the Gonzalez's were interested in purchasing the property?
No, they found out about that last year.
I know that at my professional job, if I didn't let my bosses know what the heck was going on, I'd be in real trouble. Also, I had staff meetings with my personnel. And if they didn't bring their subjects up or their matter, there would be a problem there. So, why are, how often does this happen or is it gonna continue to happen? You just let it go unsaid, undone? These council members are looking bad because some staffer didn't bring it up. Do you have staff meetings?
Yes, this would be, this would be my responsibility, yes.
I know it is because you're in charge. But is the staffer not obligated to communicate with?
Well, I mean, we, we share information with council all the time. Would it have been better if we had brought this to council when we had the request? Yes, I, in retrospect, I would say that's the best.
Thank you, thank you. And finally, will the city, talking about our tax dollars, will the city also be funding the construction and infrastructure of this daycare facility closed by stage nine?
No, we'll have a diamond.
Yeah, good. That's all I had, thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you. Good to see you, boy. Item ten B is request from me to discuss the creation of assistant chief of police position for Uvalde Police Department. And, you know, this has been on Danny's request the last two years. And, you know, with the tragedy that hit, befell our community on May the twenty-fourth, I think that we're at that point that we need that extra set of, of management or eyes there too, than taking and revolving lieutenants and putting them in that position when Danny's gone. And it would also be a point where one of them would have to be in town at all times. You know, I think that, that, I will go on record and say, I do, I do not think that this position will be or should be filled within our, our existing police department whatsoever. I think it needs to be gone out and advertised and settle qualifications. And my point was to put this on here now so that when, I know y'all been talking about it in budget, so that we could go ahead and get everything ready so when October the first comes and we start our budget, we're not doing it then and then waiting another two months to get it, then we could act sooner than later.
I believe we, in the finance committee on Tuesday, we discussed it and we've actually put it into.
We put it in the budget.
In the new budget.
Sure, so, I mean, that's all I think, I think it's.
To fund the position.
I think it's something that we need to look at, I think it's something that goes, you know, with this, that we, on our training for the officers and everything that would be involved, it would also give, you know, another set of eyes to, to make sure we hold our officers' account, absolutely.
And on that, Mayor, I would like to add, maybe get the city manager and the chiefs to also look at their command structure a little bit better. Since we're adding a chief, I think we had taken a chief out, assistant chief out and added another lieutenant. Are we still gonna keep the three lieutenants or we're gonna do away with one lieutenant and add the assistant police chief?
We're still gonna have, the plan is to add the full-time employer or employee assistant chief and the, to create lieutenants thus far.
Thus far. Just checking. Yeah, keep the position. Thank you.
We're adding, you know, my request was to add an assistant chief to it and not create one within an existing budgeted position.
Wait, so you're still gonna have three lieutenants?
Yes, sir.
I think we need to, I think we need to discuss that to look at the command structure a little bit better. Who are, who are the three attendants? I know Javier Martinez is, Mr. Martinez here is, also who's the third one? Mariano, Mariano, pardon. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
We can get it.
Good idea. Okay. Ten C, request from Councilman Chip King, discuss facilitating the organization of Rob's School Memorial Committee when the community is ready.
And last week, the Strategic Planning Committee met, is that their name? I wanna make sure I got that right. They, they met in, I don't think it was an official meeting to discuss a memorial, but they did discuss it and it created a lot of, a lot of discussion here in town. I think what I've been hearing from some of the families, I've not heard from all the families, but I've heard quite a few families and extended families, and it may be time to go ahead and start that discussion and, and create a committee, start the discussion to create a committee who would actually do the discussing, not us. We need to build a structure around that. Is it gonna be family members? Obviously, they need to be on there, have any of those? Are they, are they gonna pick some people to put on there? Citizens at large, a council member or two? Do we work with the school or not? I mean, it's pretty obvious, if, if the schools can do something, I'm sure they're gonna do it their own, or do we need to work together? Rob's School's probably be off limits for many, many, many years if you really think about it. Everybody talks about it being torn down, I can't imagine it's gonna be torn down anytime soon. So, when we start talking about memorials, we probably ought to be looking at alternate places or something like that. But I guess we need input and start the discussions, maybe city staff, I'll work with you, and if some other council members wanna work with you, then let's start building a structure around a committee and, and let's get a committee formed up in the next three days.
And I agree with you, but I think first and foremost, we need to have, there's there's other different ones that talk to the families on a regular basis, because you need, y'all need to have a tremendous.
That's what I meant. City staff, we have to talk to them, they, they pick, you know, whoever they want.
I mean, this has gotta be, I mean, I agree with you, we need to be there to be there, support and whatever you need, but we won't, I mean, it needs to be driven by y'all.
I appreciate that, and I think, you know, they would really appreciate that, getting involved and, like you said, but you gotta have a mixture of people and, as I mentioned the last time, it's, it's, at the beginning, it's very tough when you start making those decisions because you're very emotional and stuff, but I think you kind of let things, but you have to start the process though, I think that's the people that we're dealing with.
So, would you be willing to, to work with some staff and then start building it?
Absolutely.
Family be honored around that?
Absolutely.
I think you've, you've been at every meeting, you're, you're passionate and we respect that, and I think you'd be a good one to kind of start working on that.
We'd be honored.
That's all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other ideas, discussion?
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
Chip?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm in that committee, I'm in that committee, the strategic committee. And which we started talking, Suzanne and the rest of the members, since the media was there, people saw me on TV, right? I've been approached already several locations, you know, and I have talked to some of the family members, and you're right, most of them, I have not talked to all of them, but a good portion of them, and they, they said, you know, Rob is off limits, they don't want nothing there for right now, nothing. I mean, like I said, I've, I've been approached, I do have locations, proposals, locations, and I'll be getting with Susan and everybody on the other committee. Other five locations that they had mentioned to me, and, and I'm pretty sure we'll be getting some more proposals, locations, but just to name a few, just to name a few.
I wouldn't put any on her right now.
I don't know, I don't know if I should or not, but I will talk to Susan and then we can take it from there.
Let's let the committee come in and.
Yeah, but like I said, I'll be in approach and everything.
I think we found another member for the committee.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more items for discussion here? I don't have anything in possession tonight, so item twelve, motion for adjournment, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'm on the strategic committee.